Good evening. This is the Montesereno City Council meeting. Lucy is going through the Zoom. I didn't have to work into them.
So, thank you for joining us this evening for the October 4th, 2022, Montessorino City Council Regular Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I'd like to point out a few house rules to assist the council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphones is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speak. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and able to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak for agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can be also submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide any feedback or public comment. And lastly, because we're not all in the same room, all votes in this meeting will be taken by vote.
Thank you. Welcome to a hybrid meeting of the city council. And this is, we're going to hybrid so more members of the citizens will become aware that they can come in person as they want and they still have the option of joining us on Zoom. All the meeting to order, first thing we need to do is pledge allegiance. We put in a check, would you lead us?
Mayor, would you like me to take one?
Yeah, somebody after the pledge.
Oh, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, pro God.
Councilmember Lawler, accent. Councilmember Google.
Present.
Councilmember Turner, accent. Mayor Pretend Mecha.
Present.
And Mayor Alahi.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any changes to orders of the day? We have a presentation of the Senate Fire Department. We wanted to have you present today, please go ahead and start with your presentation.
Good evening. Get my PowerPoint up here. So, we have to get the PowerPoint up and Swanagur Gal, Fire Chief, is here and Mark Schumate, Deputy Chief of Training, is in the room. We're talking the PowerPoint or the presentation primarily because it's been a while. It's been a while since we were able to come in person and just kind of give you a highlight of where the organization is. We are your fire department, you are part of our inherent district, and we are proud to be your fire department. We wanted to make sure that we give an opportunity for anybody who's watching at home or members here to ask us questions about the organization as a whole, because we are coming out of COVID. We've had obviously some challenges like everybody else has, but we are coming out of it and really working hard to work on wildfire mitigation as well as just ensuring that our fleet facilities is up and being replaced accurately or adequately. We have some other things that we're working on that we'll highlight in the presentation.
We really appreciate your coming down. It's a pleasure listening to your presentation. Community outreach that you did last Sunday.
Yeah, we did our strategic planning session. So, as an accredited agency, what that really means is that we're always trying to do better, always trying to improve ourselves. We have a strategic plan. That's last strategic plan was a three-year plan and we're updating it to a five-year plan. So, you ready to go, chief?
All right, ready to go. All right. Next slide, please. Toggle to the bottom. So, a few things we're going to go over tonight is administrative staff changes. We've had a lot of changes since the last time we were out here in our administrative staff. We're going to talk a little bit about 75th anniversary, take a 12-month look back at response data in Montessorino through the public safety reports and then give you the status of a few of our projects. We're going to talk about the current focus and the focus for 2023 and projects that we have in the queue. Okay, so our administrative staff as of April, chief.
That's right.
As of April, we have a new fire chiefs, Swanagur Gal, our Assistant Chief, Brian Glass, Living Right, myself, Mark Schumate, Deputy Chief, Assigned to Training, Hector Estrada, Deputy Chief, Assigned to Prevention, Jason Florsky, Deputy Chief, Assigned to Operations. Our most recent addition, Chief Dennis Lally, Deputy Chief, Assigned to Administration and Planning. We have Dana Reed, who's assigned to the Office of Emergency Management for the county. Doug Baker, our Personal Services Director, Veronica Nebla, our Director of Business Services. Dave Snow, our Director of Support Services, and Tricia Adcock, our Director of County Communications. And then, this is very small print and a lot of little boxes. This is our organizational chart and we just wanted to give you the scope of what the department looks like as far as staffing. So, the Fire Chief handles most, all of the external, the County Communications Office of Emergency Management and some internal such as Personal Services, Director of Business Services, and then the Assistant Chief basically runs the day-to-day operations for the Fire Department. And that's everything to the left of the chart there. So, they're both very busy and have a lot of responsibilities under both of those positions. So, we want to highlight this year. We're really excited. This is our 75th anniversary. We were formed in 1947. So, we're excited that this gives us an opportunity not only to look back over the 75 years and see how much has changed in the department over that time, but also be able to look ahead and be excited for the future of the department. So, we're very excited to have our 75th anniversary.
Picture on the right there is all the living fire chiefs since Douglas Foreleader, who is a legend in the department. So, Chief Foreleader was the Fire Chief for almost 20 years. And then, he is still Las Gadas resident here, very close by. So, we had them, all of previous fire chiefs, inclusive of me, and where they're just captured a lot of the history of the organization. We can skip that for now, we'll come back to it later.
Okay, so a little bit of the history and these slides will add and subtract as we go along through the years. So, in 1947, Cottage Grove Fire Department and Oakmeat Farms Fire Department merged and became the Central Fire Protection District, San Clara County Central Fire Protection District. And that's what our response area there in red looks like at the inception of the department. And then, the first half of the 1970s, you see our area expanded a bit. No significant changes in that era other than the expanding borders. And then, the second half of the 1970s, we split off. And it's still our responsibility, it's still our district, but we divided the department into two zones. Zone one being on the east side of San Jose and zone two being county fires' current response. And the reason that that was done is San Jose handles zone one for us because it's well within their jurisdiction and it doesn't make sense for us to pass through their jurisdiction to serve those citizens over there. So, that was split off in the late second half of the 70s. In the 1980s, you saw, see that county became blue, all the unincorporated areas fell, now fall under the county fire marshal's office. So, that gave everybody county fire marshal or put the Teresta County under the county fire marshal's jurisdiction. So, we had coverage throughout the county for the fire marshal's office. Okay, and then in the 1990s, that's when we expanded a lot through contracts. So, the city of Los Altos, the city of Campbell, and the city of Morgan Hill all joined in the 90s. And we, all other contract cities, they merged their personnel and they became county fire person. So, those are still all contract cities. And then, oh, that's right, in the 2000s, 2008, we took over the fire protection for Saratoga Fire District and the city of Saratoga. And then, again, their personnel merged into our personnel. And then, 2010, the city of Morgan Hill decided to go a different way and the city of Morgan Hill is now served by Cal Fire through contract.
So, just real quick, there recently was, and we mentioned this on Saturday, there. Zone three was just approved by the Board of Supervisors. So, Central Fire Protection District had an area or still has an area over by the bucket. So, that NASA Ames facility over there, the land underneath it, most of it is Central Fire Protection District. There's a sliver of it that's not new and a sliver of it that's sunny belt. So, all of that said, the federal government plans to retrosee. We don't know when that's going to actually come to fruition, but in the meantime, we created zone three around it just to help fence around that property area that is part of Central Fire Protection. So, Central Clara County Fire, by the numbers, again, 15 fire stations, we serve a population of just around a quarter of a million folks. We cover 132 square miles, which 65% is rural, only 35% is urban. We have 300, and it's a limit now, more now, it's about 351 budgeted positions and we have daily staffing. This again is just, here's the cities that we serve, Cupertino, Campbell, Los Altos, Las Altos Hills, town of Las Gadas, city of Montessorino, Saratoga Fire District, as well as Saratoga. Again, that's two fire districts put together within that incorporated area of Saratoga. The unincorporated county areas outside of the jurisdiction, the city incorporated jurisdictions on the west side are part of our district. So, we're going to look back here. Again, governance is, we're dependent districts, so we report to the Board of Supervisors who function as our board of directors, but we also have bosses like you all in the room that we report to as well. And then, again, what's unique about county fire of the many things is that the county has charged us to be, have provided executive leadership for county communications, county office of emergency management, and the county fire marshal's office. So, there are contracts back with the district to provide these essential services that the county uses. So, I'm going to jump in here. Look real quick. So, this is a 12-month look. It says August 2022, but that's just the end date. And if you look on average, we have here on the left side of the bar graph is year to year what the call volume for Montessorino is. Now, the interesting thing about Montessorino, I will tell you, is in 2020 during the pandemic, every other city that we serve, their call volume dropped tremendously, like Cupertino dropped 30% because Apple employees weren't there, for example. But for whatever reason, Montessorino stayed the same and we think it's because people were just staying at home. So, although there's not a lot of calls in Montessorino, it did not see the dip that other cities saw during the pandemic. Over to the right, the next bar graph is month to month. So, you'll see some fluctuations. A lot of times in the summer months, October, sometimes a little bit in November, you see like the brush alongs, late summer, maybe early rains, but really, on average, Montessorino residents are only calling 911 about 20 to 30 times, about once a day in the month. And then, over underneath the bar graph that you see in orange and blue just shows by time of day. So, the orange one is actually incident count, where the blue is how many units get sent. And again, a fire will send eight pieces of apparatus, where EMS call on average, you know, just your general EMS call will send one. So, what we see here is when you need the help, we are there. So, interesting, again, for when I compare Montessorino versus other cities, they usually have a peak around six or seven and it drops off, where Montessorino tends to just kind of be even throughout the day. In the morning, we're here and late in the evening, I think maybe the residents are up late, I don't know. But we see, we don't see the dip late into the evening, what we see in other jurisdictions like Cupertino and Campbell that really have a lot of nightlife and then it just, it just exits out of the city. So, EMS, about 52% is EMS, service calls are 25%. A lot of those service calls start out as EMS because somebody says, oh, I heard something or I fell and then we get there, we do the assessment and it turns out that they don't need transport. We can go ahead and either vanish them up or help them out without having to transport the individual. Fire alarms, the 10% of the calls, fires are about 6% of the calls. And again, most of those tend to be like small vegetation fires. I'd have to look at all of the numbers directly, but you have such few fires that, I mean, if you look at the count, it's 16 for the entire year. So, that's around one a month. And then, we've got some other calls and then rescue response. So, a total for the year is 249, again, less than one a day. When you go down and look at the urban density, it's the blue, just underneath that bar graph, it has the orange and the blue. It actually shows which units respond into Montessorino. And again, you are covered by Keto Station, that's engine 78. Winchester Station, that's truck 85 over here off of Winchester Boulevard. And then, Las Gadas Station, which is rescue 83 and engine 83, as well as battalion chief out of there. So, Montessorino is well protected with Keto Station, Winchester Station, and Las Gadas Station, really kind of encompass the city as a whole. The dollar loss was just six for 28,000. Again, those small fires that were counted were usually small incipient fires, but you did not have a large dollar loss for the city of Montessorino for the year. And then, this public, the community reduction is really community education, not a lot of bifurcation between Las Gadas and Montessorino. So, what you see here is actually Las Gadas and Montessorino put together. It was hard to separate them out. So, with that said, let me go to the next slide. This one is just a distribution of the calls. And again, red generally means that the call came in as either a smoke investigation or a smoke alarm or some sort of maybe a smell of gas, something that caused a structure response. But you saw that there were 16 actual counts for fires. And if I did a quick count, two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16, 17, it might be one for one, but that's where they are distributed. For the most part, again, Montessorino is, there's not one area in Montessorino that really has like a cluster of calls. They're pretty well distributed through all of the city. And most of your calls are outside of the city boundary or most of the calls on this distribution are outside of the city boundary. Next one. This just shows all of our calls for the department for last year. And again, the department, Montessorino was 231, if I remember correctly, and we had 18,000 calls for the, or 19,000 calls approximately for the entire district. Next. What is interesting here again is that we have some busy stations like Campbell and Cupertino. Again, I mentioned that Keto Station services Montessorino and Keto Station is down there as one of the less busy stations. But again, they, Keto Station, Winchester Station, Las Gadas Station, all tend to respond into Montessorino as part of your protection. And then, down there for the incidents by station area, Montessorino is definitely, again, the lowest amount of calls are run in Montessorino. Next. This one is just by year and the only thing I want you to focus on here is just this dip in 2020. So, this is all calls in the district. So, if you look, we were kind of on this upward swing from 2016, 2017, 2018 was a little bit less, 2019. And then, boom, in 2020, due to the pandemic, we're down at 16,136 calls. So, there was definitely a dip due to the pandemic and then we started an upward swing in 2021. Go to the next slide. And where we're at today, this is year to date, today, we are back at pre-pandemic levels. So, I know that doesn't sound great because it doesn't, you know, any by the time anybody calls 911, but what we're trying to say is that there is definitely the demand, whether it's vehicle accidents or, you know, vegetation, smoke investigations, we're back at pre-pandemic levels. Chief goes back to you.
Okay. Okay, so a few current projects that we're working on. We're doing a rebuild of our Redwood Fire Station. It was double wide trailer before, was our station for years up there. And we're building a very new or a very nice, very large station up there in its place. We're excited about that, to have a new station. The crews are really happy to be getting a permanent structure rather than affordable structure up there. Actually, you know what? Let's go to the next slide. Okay, can we play that? So, this is, this video is a quick time lapse of the teardown and rebuild up to the point we're at right now of Redwood Station.
You can see it's a two-story. And what's on the outside of it is an ability for the crews to walk and look at the valley and get a view of any potential smoke that's coming from an area that's hard to serve. So, we can get eyes on whether or not we've got a fire well before we used to be able to with this station.
So, the current in 2023 focus, where we just finished our strategic planning process. We gathered all the information from both the external and internal stakeholders. We finished that up today for internal. And we'll be putting all that together and printing our strategic plan for the next five years. Staffing, we have worked really hard to get our staffing back up to pre-pandemic levels. The pandemic really put a hit on us for two reasons. One, paramedic schools were shut down because of the pandemic, so paramedics weren't coming out at the same rate they'd been coming out before. And number two, same for the fire academies. Our fire academies, because of the six feet distance we had to have between personnel, we couldn't hire as many personnel or put as many personnel in the academies as we wanted to and our numbers got behind. So, that put a lot of strain on our line personnel having to work extra shifts and, you know, they all put a lot of time in, as we all did during the pandemic. But we're finally getting caught up with that and we're back to where we were pre-pandemic. So, we're happy about that, too. We have been working with the other jurisdictions in the county for fire academies, using what we call joint fire academies with the different partners, fire agencies here in the county. We were just reaccredited to get our own academy back. We had it years ago. The state fire training changed the rules and engagement for academies. And now, we went through a long process and we have our own academy back. So, we are excited to have it back in-house so that we can teach people county fire-specific ways of fighting fire and it just makes the training a little more streamlined as they're ready to go in and work on our fire stations when they finish with our academy, rather than going through a generic academy and needing a little extra training at the end to make sure that they're doing it the way that we want it then at county fire. Let's go to the next slide. I think some of this is covered through slides. So, I'm going to move up here. Strategic planning overview. So, the mayor was there for day one on Saturday. That was the external stakeholders.
As was the city manager.
And the city manager, I'm sorry, yes, were there on day one. And so, they sat there and listened to a presentation for most of the morning and then they filled out surveys with things that were important to them for our department moving forward for the next five years. And then, yesterday and today, we're all internal stakeholders and just, you know, developing ways that we can improve on the department, improve on our service to the community. Thank you. So, there's three themes in the strategic planning process. How do we continue to improve upon protecting lives, property, and the environment during and prior to emergency events? How do we meet increasing service demands in the coming years? And how do we better market our services to demonstrate our value to the community? What we're looking for there is at the end, 12 strategic objectives, 21 outcome measurements, and 56 supporting objectives in that document.
That slide is just really to say that we pay attention to data. We pay attention to what's going on and we're looking for trends. So that if we have a trend in Montessorino, for example, let's say it's EMS and let's say it's falls. We're going to focus our outreach and our community education in Montessorino to what that risk is for the jurisdiction. We don't want to just do a one-size-fits-all because we've got seven towns and cities that we serve and each one is very unique. So, Campbell is obviously very different than the city of Montessorino, very different than the city of Puerto Rico. So, that's really what that slide says, that we are paying attention as an accredited agency of what our data tells us so that we can kind of, if we will, laser focus surgically, try to do community education and prevention in the cities based on what the data says.
Okay, and then, our efforts towards sustainability is, right now, we've just developed a committee looking for ways to make the department more green, electric vehicles, solar on the stations. We're already looking at, we're already doing water conservation. One of the big areas there is that when we normally test fire hydrants every year, every three years, I believe it was, we would flow the hydrants and do flow testing. We don't do that. No need to waste water. We make sure there's pressure in the hydrant, make sure there's nothing wrong with the valves, that they open and water comes out. But we're not doing the large flows of water that we would normally do when we have plenty of rain and plenty of water in the reservoirs. We're also using biodiesel, which is better for the environment. And as I said, we're looking into electric vehicles, not electric fire engines yet, but we're working on the pool cars, the fleet of vehicles that we use outside of all the emergency response vehicles and looking at either hybrid or electric in those areas. So, we're better partners with the fire. And this is our idea committee. And if I don't look at this, I'm going to get it wrong. It's our inclusion, diversity, equity, and accountability committee. And this, we go out, they're doing outreach. This is at Foothill College. And we're going out trying to looking for, to provide interest to people who may be interested in the fire service, athletes, trying to build the diversity within the organization. So, we've been doing a lot of outreach with our idea committee members at various local areas because we want local people to work for the fire department, too.
All right, so I had mentioned earlier that Senator Evan Lowe had worked with Congresswoman Eshu in getting a $7 million West Valley Cities grant. The town of Las Gadas generously did a direct pass-through. The town of Los Gatos generously did a direct pass through to the district and for two million dollars. And so if you hit the next slide, this is what we've done with it. We have created a Sona Fuels crew and that fuels crew really is key in terms of the preventative side of the house. They're going out finding, uh, if you will, right now they're working on projects or egress or, uh, problems with, uh, potential like overgrown vegetation. And they're taking that crew out there and they're chipping away at it, removing it and really just trying to remove the ground fuels again. Wildfires spread because of the ground fuels. It's not generally speaking, you won't, until you get those massive, if you will, mega fires, they're not moving from tree to tree to tree. It's really moving on the ground, even though there's tree or, or, if you will, um, you know, ladder fuels above them. So they're trying to remove that ladder fuel so that it doesn't crown and then put out other sparks. So be in the next one. Um, again, this is just what they're doing. They're going out, this is a group of six with a captain and a battalion chief and doing a lot of this fuel mitigation. And that's over here, all in this area here, between, um, highway seventeen. And they've done some work all the way up in Cupertino as well on the, on the west side. Um, this one I would like to play, go ahead and hit play. Uh, well, if, if the volume's not there, just again, it, it was a piece that they did on the local news that they basically mounted, it was a very hot day. Uh, not too hot for the crews to work, but they went in there and they just started working on removing a bunch of vegetation. And it creates that fuel break, if you will. So if that vegetation, the vegetation fire does occur, it gives the crews chance to get there because it slows down the spread. Um, sure. It's okay. The last thing I want to say with regard to wildfire preparation, and we'll go to the next slide, is the department purchased on its own Zone Haven. So Zone Haven is an evacuation tool that is used, um, that basically instead of saying, oh, hey, there's, it doesn't have to be a fire, it could be a flood. It could be some other thing that is, uh, risk, uh, that is causing, um, a risk for the citizens or the community of Monteserino. Well, what you can do is go directly to the website, zonehaven.org, I think it's that one. And then you can see that Monteserino was broken up into two zones, M S E O O three. And then there's M S E, uh, this one that's clicked, E O O two. And then, oh, I'm sorry, three zones and then M S E is zero, zero, one. And so when you have a wildfire anywhere in the state, um, there are, most of the state is actually using Zone Haven. So if you go to the map, you could see which zones have an evacuation warning and which zones have an evacuation order. In the past, it was really challenging because you'd have to say, well, uh, it'll be highway nine east of, uh, and then you're trying to figure out which way north, south, east, west is. You don't do that now. You know, based on your address, you put in your address and you know what zone you're in. It'll tell you what zone you're in. What we encourage residents to do is to go to alert SCC and then sign up there and we'll push it out to you so that you know your zone. And then once you know your zone, should you ever need to evacuate, whether it's a warning or an order, it will, it will ping your mobile device. Um, and again, this is your know your zone. And again, it's myzone.zonehaven.com, not one, sorry. Yeah. Zonehaven.com. Um, and we continue to do wildfire preparedness. Next. Um, we continue to do local mutual aid. So what you see here is down in Morgan Hill, we had a gentleman who was working. He didn't know it, there was a manhole cover that was removed. He fell down it twenty feet. And your department has a type one U S R team and a type one hazmat team. And so they asked for help. We went down there and we were able to extract this individual out of the hole. He only suffered a couple of breaks in one leg. And we continue to do day one mutual aid. So we're not going to show the videos here, but again, we're out there at the McKinley fire. We were out there at the mosquito fire. So you, but when we go out there and go out on these large campaign fires, we backfill with our staff. So you were never, um, if you will, short-staffed because we're out. And we're just going to continue to work collaboratively again, meeting Chief Jamie Fields, who's the Monteserino, uh, Las Gatas Police Chief, and then working with County Parks. We're working with Sheriff's Office. We just continue to work collaboratively with all of the jurisdictions that help serve the city of Monteserino. I think, last thing we just want you to know is there's our website. You can find a lot of our accreditation documents, our documents that tell us, tell you who we are, what our data is. That's the standards of cover. And then our strategic plan is currently being updated. We'll eventually hit this, uh, place on the website, but you can see it under key reports or it says about SCC and the key reports and then all of our documents are on the website. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Let me, I just have a couple of questions, I guess. Uh, you, you have a number of fire stations. Who's the other big fire department? It says it has its own fire department.
We are the second largest in the county. San Jose is the first one. They have thirty-five. I should know this, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank. But they are, they, they are the largest agency and we are the second.
And then the third is the smallest.
I'm going to say Santa Clara City.
But you guys have really good working relationship with all of them.
As a matter of fact, tomorrow, once a month, all of the fire chiefs meet. It's the Santa Clara County Fire Chiefs Association. They'll meet at our county fire headquarters. And they sit there and they talk about challenges, successes, threats, those kinds of things. And we work through it through that everyone.
And the other question I wanted to ask you, you've got these different stations like Kito and other stations. Are they equipped comparable to like the Campbell station, to the visit, visit station that you have? We have different kind of equipment.
So at the Kito station is a type one engine, just like what's at Campbell station. Same exact type of engine. But Kito station also has a water tender. And we put the water tender there, Kito station, it has seven hundred, fifteen hundred gallons of water. So it's purposely there because up in the hillside, the challenge is water supply. So we put the risk, which is the wildland urban interface, equipment closer to that risk. So what you have at Kito station is a water tender that is not at Campbell station. Um, for example, Cupertino has a tiller truck because it's got high rises. So you don't have high rises here, you don't have a tiller truck here. That's located over in Campbell with a type one engine. So at that station, you have a type one engine of tiller truck, which is the long ladder truck. And then you've got a wild and capable engine as well. Chief Schumay, before he promoted, worked out of that station for quite a while as a captain.
Thank you, yeah. Before I go and ask more questions, let me, let me ask my fellow city council members their questions.
I have been very pleased with the level of service that we've got in Monteserino. I live close to Dave's Avenue and there's been a couple of fires on Dave's or off of Dave's Avenue. Um, one was in between Poppy, I think, and Carl. And that was addressed quickly and expeditiously. Couple, so that's kind of a, a comment in terms of our residents. Many of them are building homes or renovating homes, particularly on the hillsides. And they have to deal with turnaround issues or, uh, fire equipment. And I know that from residents that have contacted me that you've been very accommodating and, and worked with them through to solutions. And I know that's a challenge. Um, but that's a service level that we look for is, is in terms of if someone puts in a plan for their, uh, building permit, they need to get approval from the fire department. So it's just, just letting you know, that's kind of on what we hear about.
Uh, we've got a lot of, and again, you know, we see the poll volume going up. We know that over time, this area just keeps getting more and more populated. Well, if you don't build up, you have to build out. And if you're building out, you're building into the wildland urban interface. And that's a challenge because what the Board of Forestry has done recently is basically been very clear about, we don't want some of these tragic fires that you've seen, like in the town of Paradise, in the city of Florida, town of Paradise, and the Tubbs fire in Santa Rosa, happening in other jurisdictions where you don't have adequate egress, ingress, adequate term. Because it's for the residents, but it's also for the first responders. Um, you know, fatalities happen with, uh, with regard to just, you know, simple fires. And we were trying to minimize that as best possible because it is a dangerous job. But we are there for you in terms of fire prevention. Uh, we, our, um, fire prevention, uh, division is located at the, up the corner of Lark and Winchester because we outgrew our headquarters. Um, one of the things that, um, we'll go back and just quickly talk about is our headquarters. Since we over, outgrew it, we're going to be moving to Dell. Uh, it's, it's a new building off of Dell Avenue in Campbell. And that way we get everybody back together. A lot of things that have kept that, just like what Chief Schumay said, which is the pandemic has stalled it. So building materials, other things. So we, we had hoped to be in there and this year, that was the plan because we're like, oh, we'll be able to be there for our seventy-fifth anniversary. Right now it's looking like quarter four, twenty twenty-three. But that's okay. We're, we're, you know, we know that that's a challenge everywhere, but that's where we'll be moving to. And we are expanding our, you know, again, we, we got behind in terms of staffing for fire prevention, just like we did for our operation, on the operation side of the house. We are slowly adding staff back that had not been added during the pandemic.
Thank you. The, I'm glad you've mentioned water conservation and I've been doing some work with, uh, with San Jose Water Company and, and the CPUC. But one of the things is leaks and leaks are to some extent caused by certain people believe opening and closing hydrants quickly, more on the closing side. So I'm assuming that your firefighters are all trained to close them not real fast.
That's one of the first things we review or teach them in the fire academies, is how to open and close a fire hydrant slowly because I don't want damage to the fire department on our training ground any more than you want damage to the fire hydrant in front of your house or in your city. So yeah, they're all trained on how to open and close a fire hydrant. So there's no water hammer and no damage to your system.
My third comment slash question, and I believe it's the last one, is on electric vehicles and lithium batteries. And I know that with the floods in Florida, that certain cars were, electric cars were submerged and there was all kinds of issues. And I'm, and with the ban in twenty thirty-five on, on the sale of internal combustion engine vehicles, um, where are you on lithium battery fires? Can you talk about that a little bit?
I'm glad you mentioned it. So FireScope, which is an organization of, uh, that really is proactive about looking at threats within fire service and how to make us more uniform in our response meets once a quarter. And last quarter in June in Sacramento, I was attending and they had a whole presentation of lithium ion batteries specific to cars as well as the scooters, these electric bikes that you see. They're everywhere. And unlike, um, I think what we, you know, when Teslas came out and I, I'm using Tesla because they were the first, you know, very, um, I guess, if you will, sort of ubiquitous electric, available electric vehicle. Um, Chief Schumay had as a battalion chief a fire in which there was a fire. And then we were trying to figure out how to prove it out. Now, technology has changed. It's adapting and it's improving. And we also are adapting, improving the way we handle those fires. But with regard to the way the, the fire service as a whole throughout the state is dealing with it, it's being handled at FireStop. We're looking at it specifically within subcommittee in that organization.
Thank you.
House member, you told, did you have any questions?
No, thank you. Uh, my questions were covered with the presentation regarding the wildland urban interface, the construction, the evacuation, all of that. So great job, thank you.
All right. Let's see. You don't have a problem finding people to work for the fire department? I know there's too many of them. Much people who always wanted to work for the fire department, you're still true. How's it going? I know you, you, you have to cast a wider net because of diversity and other issues.
Well, so one of the things, and you know, Chief and I were hired around the same time. And we both had different careers before we got into the fire service. I have a biotech degree and was working for a biotech company. And the chief had a, like, was part of a family business. And what I will say is that the calling is there still, that, um, I will say that nine eleven was one of the factors that, because I got hired after nine eleven, of like saying, hey, I want to be part of the solution and I want to be, um, you know. But I will say that there is a, um, a challenge with paramedics. So if there's anybody out there who has, uh, family members that are paramedics who definitely are looking to continue our advanced life support care that our medics provide on engines. Uh, we have a, we're fully staffed on paramedics, but there's always that need. So, um, that's, that's the one piece that's kind of challenging for fire organizations.
It is impressive, anybody who's been there and you guys show up for life. Basically giving life at that point. I've been there, so I know, a great job you guys do.
I think this organization, um, really prides itself on customer service. And I know it's on our patch, but it is really a culture of the organization. So we're, we're happy to hear that feedback.
What they ought to ask you, what, we have a housing element issue. We're supposed to build more, we're not. We, we are, we're trying to address it so we can also do, uh, build affordable housing. It's through ADUs. We have about two hundred ADUs over the next seven or eight years. It's, it's not like instantaneous. But the ADUs have their own fire requirements as far as how far back they can be. And you guys can get your trucks in there and out of there and knock. So if there's, I don't know if our city is working with you or not, I don't know. This is with you. Take a look at the ADU requirements so that a lot of, sometimes people have gone in and they've built the ADU and then at the last minute, the fire department comes and says, no, this road's not wide enough. This is not good enough. We just spend, you know, you need, we need more fire hydrants here and we need something else. So we could have some kind of planning so that we can hand to the ADU person and say, this is what you need to watch for. This is who you need to talk to before they go too far into that process.
The accessory dwelling units have been a challenge for quite some time. And it's because, to your point, um, this ask of, hey, create more housing. And people are like, oh, okay, I can do that. And then they, they do, they get to a place where we have to say, oh, wait, wait, there's, you are not going to be signed off on the permit because of X, Y or Z. Um, and we have, um, some resources on our website, but I think it gets lost in translation. It's, it's a lot of, uh, I think, well, it's easier to understand in person. So I invite anybody who is thinking about a project to come talk to our fire prevention office. And I know they're very busy, uh, because they're dealing with all these developments. But there is a place that you can get in the queue and get some time and have some people answer the questions directly regarding where you're at, what code might apply, what they, in, in terms of guidance of what we're looking for that are, if you will, um, the challenges for people in what they've seen in, in the area, based on the experience. We're far enough now down the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit, um, process that we have enough experience to be able to help out. Where initially, when it started up, I think it was kind of a scramble to make sure we understood the code to, to work with each of the city towns and jurisdictions. So, um, the resource I will say again is the fire prevention division that's there on the corner of Lark and Winchester. But you can pick up the phone and call and, um, uh, see if you can get your question answered on the phone.
Well, that's wonderful, but you have the resource. What I, my suggest is if you guys can come with a little brochure for people who are building ADUs, this is what you need to watch out for, this is who need to call, this is our number. And that way we can hand it to anybody who comes in and flies for a permit for an ADU and say, take care of this or later on you don't see the fire department, it's not making me do this. You know, you look like the bad guy because they've spent two, four hundred thousand dollars building the ADU and then they find out that you should have done something. That would have only cost them a couple of hundred bucks if they had done right. If you guys can, if you can take that back and If you guys can, if you can take that back and see if you guys come over and we're sure, some simple stuff. And then it doesn't have to have everything in it, but enough so they can get, you know, pointed in the right direction. So that would be helpful.
I'll take that feedback back definitely.
Is uh what about fire drills? Is that something that can be done? I mean, we're always concerned about ingress and egress and monetary places. I mean, I don't know if it's practical to a fire drill for the whole city, but can you do fire drills for particular portions? Or some places where there's some serious issues of ingress and egress?
So we do have, so for fire drills, like this month, it's fire prevention month. It's actually the hundredth anniversary for fire prevention, working with um the National Fire Protection Agency, NFA. Um, they do fire drills at the schools and they do it every other year. So because we can't hit all the schools in one cycle. Um, with regard to evacuation drills, um, a lot of times the Fire Safety Council will work with communities that are in higher risk uh communities up in the hillsides to do what's called like a a a drill there. Um, we've had it a couple of times over the last couple of years, but that's that has to be coordinated unusually through the Fire Safety Council. Uh, with that said, that does not mean that um we can't look at that possibility. It's just having a drill like that for your residents, it would be a problem, I think, with uh just your roadways and try to figure out how to do that. But that doesn't mean that we can't.
Yeah, it'll be a huge project. So I'll just I'm just throwing that idea out and see if it's practical or not.
Yeah.
Because on the other hand, if you don't do a fire drill and you have a paradise situation, then
Yeah.
that's that's much more destructive. So if you weigh those two somewhere along the line, there might be a balance that can be achieved.
Well, that's what the uh again, the the Zone Haven does is if you go in there, you know, what we're doing on the incident management side of the house is we're typing in, your egress is here, right? You want to, we want to not just tell people that you're you've got an evacuation warning or evacuation order, but we try, we're trying to also give them a route out. Um, the one caution that I will say for anybody who's listening is Waze is problematic. So if you're using an application that's telling you how to get out, um, a lot of times it'll route you to like these driveways or these areas that really don't have good turnaround. So um be cautious about using those applications if you ever are in a situation where it doesn't matter if you're here or anyone how anywhere else in state, Waze is problematic when it comes to a place where you're being routed out.
I think the zone suggestion is a good one. Maybe if you have a website so people can log in and get there. Or at least it should say this is where you need to go.
Yeah, I think it is on our website, but um we'll we'll make sure. Oh, Montesino.
So you'll point it to your website. I I did it after I attended. That's good. Uh, I'm going to ask to see if there's any member of the public who has any questions or uh ask it this time. Are there any hands up at all? All right. I mean, then we'll bring it back to council. Does anybody else on council have any questions? All right. We really appreciate you coming on here. I hope I don't mess up your name. So could could hardly pronounce it.
Both K's pronounced as G's. So it's great. Yeah. Yeah.
Right, Chief Corcoran, thank you so much. And uh, Chief Schrock.
Schumet, yeah.
I really appreciate it.
Our pleasure, our pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Excellent report. And there was a there's a lot of things that we need to take from there. Hopefully there'll be a pop-up in the sentence. Um, for communications, does anybody wish to address the council on any matter that's not on the agenda at this time? Doesn't look like anybody has a hands up. So we'll go on to the next one, which is written communications. Are there any written communications that have not been provided also for review prior to the meeting? And that need to be considered at this time? Oh, all right. Then we go to consent calendar. Uh, we have three items on the consent calendar. I understand the items one and two need to be pulled. And uh, so as far as item three is concerned, is there uh any questions on her? Can you consider that as continue to consider it part of the consent calendar? It sounds like we can. So then can I have a motion to have those? I don't know. We're three on the consent calendar group.
So moved.
Can I have a second on that?
I will uh go ahead and second that. Uh, do we need any public comment? I'll just point out.
Uh, good. Yeah, thank you for pointing that. Is does any member of the public wish to comment on item number two on the consent calendar? We don't have any comments, so we don't. So we'll go ahead and take a roll call in the motion.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Lawler, absent. Councilmember Lupe.
Yes.
Mayor Prochek, Megachek.
Hi.
And Mayor Lahe.
Hi.
Which passes.
Okay, then go back to item number one, which is which is the warrant list, which has been pulled from the consent calendar. Uh, there's three matters on that warrant list that I have refused myself on. It has to do with reimbursements for expenses that I include on behalf of the city attending seminars and conventions, one for twenty twenty one, one for twenty twenty two. Say so. Sure.
Um, perhaps we could have uh our finance director uh make some comments on the uh warrant list because I thought there were there was another change. And maybe it's the city manager.
Hello, Mayor Prochek, Megachek. Which um items are you interested in? And we'll have Mr. Samorano uh address those items.
I I thought you were going to remove uh several payments from the from the uh warrant list for this period.
Yeah, I'm on the car.
Yeah, I got that wrong.
Yes. Yes. Um, are you referring to the architect matter, the G GKW architect?
Uh, yes, I understand. Has that been removed?
I could remove it. Um.
Oh, okay. But you're not removing it.
Um, I can remove it now. Um, if that's the process. So we can, you can consider the warrant list with the exception of removing uh check number two thousand eight in the amount of two thousand six fifty payable to GKW architects.
Yes, and then also the three, I think it's three uh payments to uh Mayor Lahe. And then then we can vote on them without any recusing.
Oh, okay. I I switch it to that. So basically, uh, the the two payments on the warrant list, uh, I went through two of them. And the third one is my refund for the ballot statement that I paid for of twenty cents empty. So the number is, so the items that are going to be removed from the warrant list are the two thousand eight uh two zero 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 eight, the GKW architect, the two hundred two hundred twenty thousand and ten uh twenty thousand seventeen and twenty thousand eighteen payable to me. Uh, these items can be brought back at the next year, next meeting, uh, to be properly considered. The with the rest of it, we can consider the warrant. Uh, Councilmember Luton, did you have any uh discussion on this?
Yeah, um, my concern is, um, and um perhaps I don't believe an explanation that will satisfy me can be offered tonight. Um, so I would request that this be polled and probably looked at by the finance committee. We'll see if people agree with that. Um, I was looking at this and I see an extremely unusual payment to Elena Consulting. It says it covers the period from six twenty five twenty twenty two to nine twenty one twenty twenty. We have already paid six uh twen- six six to seven three, seven four to seven thirty one and eight. Uh, and uh and then uh the month of August uh with numbers equal to or greater than the usual run rate for Elena Consulting. They're now asking for a payment apparently for the month of September. If we assume the September payment is roughly the fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars of their usual run rate, they're asking for an additional twenty one thousand dollars or seventy six hundred dollars a month during the three months period that they claim to cover. So I think uh we're going to need to audit this carefully. And I'd ask the finance committee, if we still have a finance committee, to figure out what's going on and how this um extremely unusual payment got submitted to us and made the warrant list without comment.
Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, Mr. Samoros, uh, wish to address this at this time?
Yes, I will uh remove that as well. That is check number nineteen thousand nine ninety eight payable to Alana Consulting in the amount of thirty eight thousand nine hundred three dollars and fifty nine cents. It has been removed.
So and if you can, I I guess our finance committee, which is a uh Mayor Prochek and myself, we will meet with you maybe this Friday. And hopefully we review that and it's a it's that that is a needs to be looked at. And since we have two matters on it, they can both be reviewed. Is there anything else, Councilmember Luton?
No, that's it. I would just uh need to uh come back with um some some really clear understanding that more eyes are on this because uh like I say, it's twenty one thousand dollars in a short period of time when invoices were already submitted. Uh, and it's it's very out of the ordinary. So um something is wrong, I believe. If we are paying suddenly uh seventy six hundred dollars a month more, then we're going to need to potentially review how we're handling plan checks because then we're getting into the range of we should probably have staff covering this rather than independent contractors. So um I assume you'll take a look at this, bring it back, um, but I'm hoping for not a generic, we looked at it and it's covered. But um bringing it as well with an explanation about what's going on and maybe having it on the uh a review of of what we're doing with plan checks, if in fact this is correct.
I I I think it's a good suggestion. So could could we ask that when the staff report is prepared for the warrant list next time? If this are uh it it has a detailed explanation on uh how this has been handled.
All right, and nothing else on this. Um, and with that, um, I guess um we'll need public comment, but I'm prepared to make a motion on this item.
Let me see if there's any public comment. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the warrant list? Uh, which now would consist of consist of all items except for the uh five items that we have we have removed. There's no public comments. Bring it back to council. Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion to adopt the uh warrant list with the exception of the five items indicated.
I will second that motion.
Those items are check uh nineteen thousand nine nine eight, uh twenty thousand ten, uh twenty thousand and eight, uh twenty thousand seventeen and twenty thousand and eighteen.
That is correct.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion. Roll call please.
Councilmember Lupe.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Lawler, absent. Mayor Prochek, Megachek.
Hi.
And Mayor Lahe.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, the next matter we have is a agreement between the city of Montesino and the A corporation. Councilmember Luton had also requested that this matter be pulled. So we can start our discussion on that with the Councilmember Luton.
Thank you. Um, the reason um I asked that this be polled was, uh, again, um, it seems to have come up relatively without any explanation. Uh, and the attached contract appears to be essentially asking us to back to to the beginning of twenty twenty one um on this item. Um, so uh I'm not inclined to um come and patch holes uh if that's indeed what's being done dating back to January of twenty twenty one. If this was something that was supposed to be before council and wasn't done, it needs to come with a full staff report and explanation about what's gone on and and why this is problematic. And then we need to talk about what we're going to do about it. Um, otherwise, again, I don't know why it's come to us on the warrant list with a uh unfilled and uh incomplete contract with what appears to be completely incorrect dates on it, if it's something that we're doing concurrently. So I'd like some explanation on that, or maybe we should just pull it and bring it back to a further uh and more detailed discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah. I I apologize. I should have had the city manager give us the staff report. But uh I think now you can focus on the on your staff report as you respond to Councilmember Luton's concern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Luthol. I don't know how that was. Uh, it was an oversight for the date of January fourth, twenty twenty one. Um, we can note that that can be corrected prior to uh signature being adopted. I don't know if the item needs to be completely pulled and rejected this evening. That is just a typographical error. And we will get those errors uh fixed. Somehow or another, that escaped three sets of eyeballs. Myself, city clerk, and presumably Mr. Rudden. Um, because that is not the date that this contract will be uh being adopted. It should be um tonight's date, October fourth of twenty twenty two.
Yeah, I I will concur that the council does have the authority to adopt this contract with an amended uh effective date as of uh tonight's council meeting. And should the council decide to approve this contract, I would recommend you include that in your motion. Uh, I'll leave it to the city manager to, you know, provide additional background as to what this contract is for and, you know, why it might be necessary.
If you're allowed us, if you can go ahead and address the rest of the Mr. Councilmember Luton's concern as to what this is all about.
Certainly. So this contract is for engineering services on an interim basis for um a gentleman named Mr. Don Wimberly. He actually used to work for the city of Montesino. He more frequently worked for uh the city of Sunnyvale. Uh, this is to replace the services of engineer Jessica Khan, who resigned her last day of work uh officially at the office was September twenty eighth. And um right now we are without a city engineer's services. So this was to fill that. Uh, we also have the job rec posted on Cal Ops to hire the more permanent city engineer. But this was a kind of an in-between a solution for us. So we felt it was a good solution. Uh, Mr. Wimberly, because of his experience working with the city of Montesino, um, he is very familiar with our city and our issues. And he had a beautiful transition meeting with the uh with Ms. Khan before she had left. So he's well aware of the job responsibilities and what is required to step in on an interim basis. And uh I really do apologize about that date. I do not know at all how that escaped all of us. Um, or if something else happened. But there it is. My apologies. And we can get that. If we could just note the change, we'll get that corrected before it's signed by council.
All right. I appreciate the explanation and um I guess this um just comes up um really without having um one, any introduction to me about Ms. Khan leaving. And uh and this was for interim services and that wasn't made clear in the staff report. And and so when I saw the dates, but the beginning and the end, um, it was extremely confusing as to what we're doing. So with this clarification and correction, uh, my concerns about the agreement would be to see that it is a reasonable rate, which it appears to be, and that we have reasonable termination provisions, which we appear to have. And so um uh now with this clarification, I guess I'm fine going forward with it.
I'll have a comment.
Or you can. Okay. If you're allowed us, did you have anything else to add on your staff report?
Um, no, I appreciate the um the catch on that and thank you.
All right. Okay. Further questions from council and Mayor Prochek? Please go ahead.
Uh, I think there may be another typo in there and that has to do with uh our city clerk's uh certification of it. Uh, check the uh her last name, please. And.
We will get that uh fixed as well.
Okay, and uh I think that it's good that we've got uh someone on a interim basis to to fill in uh for the vacancy while it's there. And I think in the longer term, we need to address whether uh that is a full-time position or that is a full-time position or a part-time or a contract position. But we have to keep moving ahead with with the city of Montesorino and our public work. So obviously, we need to fill this position. So if you're going to open public comment, then I'd be prepared to make a motion.
Okay, me. Honestly, I'm also concerned about we have lost a very good contributor, Jessica Kahn. But I congratulate Mr. Leonardis for finding a replacement so quickly. But I think it would be helpful if that information that happens. All council members are surprised that that change is coming because honestly, also Luthold is not surprised. It causes causes some concern. So I would recommend to you, city manager, to take into conference to the extent you can. I mean, there's some drawn-up issues and some personality issues. To the extent you can, that would be in the future. So with that being said, I don't know any other questions. So turn it over to the public. Does does any member of the public have any questions or comments on item number two?
No, no raised hands.
All right, there's no raised hands. So they don't. So we bring it back to council. If there are no comments, if anybody wants to make a motion to approve the agreement with the city of Montesorino and Ames Corporation.
Actually, I I do have an additional comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I just I did want to follow up on what Mayor Protem Mekachuk mentioned, which is and and this is not to micromanage the city manager who's doing his job, getting this out on the job board. I know we have a union contract that may need to be followed. But based on Mr. Mekachuk's comment, I would be interested in hearing the city manager's comments, maybe tonight, maybe at the next meeting about those comments, which is, do we need full-time engineering staff? Is that a job that can be combined in any way with the plan check or part of the plan check? So how can we serve the city best for the least amount of money? While doing the essentially the engineering job? Is is that necessarily a full-time staffed position that only does engineering? So I'm looking at that as a way to potentially look for savings and better services for the city. And we'd be interested in having a discussion about that. Again, I know this is the city manager's purview to do the hiring, and it may be limited by contract, but I'd like to look for savings and service anywhere we can do that. So those are my comments.
Thank you. City manager Leonardis, if you'd articulate what you're feeling on what what you want in this position?
We're still we're still assessing the need for the city of Montesorino. Again, this is a interim position with an hourly rate. We are in the process. We have a job record out there for a full-time city engineer employee. And we have that out on Cal Ops, which we've had great success recruiting many good employees for the city of Montesorino so far. So we'll we'll determine the needs going forward. But for the time being, this Mr. Wimberly will be scheduled to be working twenty hours per week on a contract basis.
So basically, this is an assessment that you're going to make. And based on that, the hire is going to take this. At least if you move forward and form somebody who seems to be a good good replacement candidate to ask that. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will go back. We have a motion, right?
Yes, you have a motion. I will make a motion to approve the contract subject to the today's date and the verification of the signature or sorry, the certification of the signatures. So that's my motion. All right. Go second.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second that.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Lawler, absent. Councilmember Luthold?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Mayor Protem Mekachuk?
Aye.
Mayor Alani?
Aye. Okay. That takes care of our consent calendar. And we don't have any other public areas. There's no unfinished business as far as I can tell. There's no new business as far as I can tell. And then we're towards our committee commission reports. Your pro tem, Mekachuk, do you want to go ahead and make your report?
Yes. The committees that I'm on, the external JPAs, I'm an alternate on Silicon Valley Clean Energy, chair of the Audit Committee, and then also a member of the Finance Administration Committee. The Finance Administration Committee is meeting tomorrow. And we'll be reviewing items that will be usually recommended to the Board of Directors. And then in terms of the Audit Committee, we did approve the change in auditors. Sorry, in the of the audit partner and the continuation of the new audit firm. I was very impressed with them. As something that perhaps we could consider in the future, the city of Montesorino, looking at it at our auditors. In terms of Silicon Valley, sorry, West Valley Clean Water, I'll have something to report, I believe, at the next meeting. And then also West Valley Solid Waste. I'm having a meeting, an update meeting prior to our next board meeting. So I have nothing to report there yet at this time. That concludes my committees.
Thank you. Councilmember Luthold, if you care to report on any committees and commissions, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. On the library JPA, they are working now on their next cycle strategic goals. I had my individual meeting with Jennifer Weeks, the head of the library. And looks like they're putting together a great plan that I believe will be formally presented at their at the next JPA meeting. And then I'll come back and formally present, or we might even invite the library, if we have time at any of our upcoming meetings, to to give us the update on that, on their strategic plan. Always I like to remind people, and we have an incredible resource with the Santa Clara County Library District and our JPA. So they're doing great work and they have a lot of good news and good plans to report and looking forward to bringing that back. I did let them know that I will not be on next year's council. They'll be looking at having presumably a new representative on the JPA. That's something that I know Mr. Burton Craig has been active in before. I just mentioned now that as the strategic planning and all of that is going forward, if there's any likelihood that he might be wishing to take that JPA position back for additional continuity, that's something that we may want to out reach out to Mr. Craig and have him start paying attention to the meetings that are going on now. Because they're very important to set the plan and and understand where the library is going to be going in the next year and beyond. So that's all for my report for now.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion. I think we are very fortunate. We are getting back a couple of people who've got experience. Unlike when we started, we didn't have anybody with any good experience. But that's that's going to be a big boost. Burton and you were they were both on council before. So that's a good boost. I might suggest if you can, and if you're not already doing it, CCing Burton or whoever else may be interested or whatever meetings are coming up. So if they want to again, they can probably zoom in and attend those. I've started to do do that to CCing, you know.
And mayor and council members, I just want to speak up there on that point. You should be aware that as incoming officials, the Brown Act has a specific provision that applies to people who have been elected but have not yet taken office. And I believe that will also apply to members of the council that are appointed to council in lieu of an election. So for the purposes of communication about matters that are within the scope of city business, be advised that you don't want to be doing that with incoming members in a way that could potentially form a quorum.
You know, I understand that, but we're just sending out notices. So if the JPA sends us a notice for a meeting, forwarding that notice, then is that an issue?
No, that just forwarding a notice, certainly not. But I that was just more of a general general warning.
Of course, of course. Yeah, no, just just forwarding notices. We're not telling you what to do or what we are going to be doing. But I think it's a good idea that if they can, they wish to attend, it would be good for them. Okay, my my reports, I think the one that I found curious was there's a West Valley Mires and Managers Committee that meets is by West Valley Mires. I guess it's the city of Sacramento, Los Gares, Cupertino, Campbell, and Montesorino. And apparently, there's another organization. At this point, I'm forgetting what the symbol is. It's an organization that is designed to coordinate the security between each of the cities. And that has been in business for fifteen years, but I didn't even know whether that was there. And I don't know if customer Luthold, you ever had ran into a meeting at that. But they've come up with a formulation on how to appoint new council members or new members. They appoint members to the VTA board and other boards. So they're they come up with a process to do that. I believe I sent sent out they forwarded the email, which was sort of incomplete. So so that's another organization that Montesorino needs to be presented on. Maybe, well, we are presented with the city managers' organization, but this organization that then sends out active members to the VTA on all the different keep track of that also. So I'll try to send out the email as I have to put them actually. So that is a price over six months. That's the end of my report. Next is council member comments.
I do have one comment. This is committee and commission reports. And on the committee side, council member Luthold and I are on the housing element. And I don't I I believe that city manager Leonardis is going to talk about this, but I think we're at two hundred and twenty-one or two hundred and twenty-two signed ADU letters of intent. So I'll just put that out as a as a teaser for city manager Leonardis. And I would like to commend council member Luthold and the site architectural commissioners were really working at this and and getting the number up and for our planner, Ms. Perkins, for getting postcards sent out that I believe we're going to push this over the top of the two hundred and twenty-five. And maybe I'm going into also future agenda items, but we may want to consider increase in the number from two twenty-five in terms of allowing more. But that's a future agenda item. I just wanted to make those comments in sorry, council member Luthold, if you were going to say something on that.
No, thank you for making the comments and and bringing that up. This is critical. It's exciting. And that we are about to turn that corner. I do second the idea that we may want to bring this onto the calendar, especially if we get people attempting to sign up beyond the two twenty-five number. I know there's going to be a little bit of checking work that needs to go on. I think there have been a few errors. So I think we're going to want to go ahead and accept a number greater than the two twenty-five. And then I think once we do the checking, if we've let a few more people in, we probably should, as a council, bring that to the council and consider rewarding those people that we've kind of led down on that path of believing that they are in. So we will probably should talk to Ms. Perkins. Maybe Mr. Leonardis can do this. Obviously, we can't address this as a council right now, but maybe staff can pick a number, whether it's two thirty or two thirty-five or something, whatever seems like the appropriate overage. And then after careful checking, if we are over, bring it back for some approvals. We'll also need to make sure that staff shuts down the website with a thank you. We think we have the numbers we need. If you want to get in a queue in case you're needed, we'll need to make some sort of a switch on that. So I'll just point that out so Mr. Leonardis can follow up. I don't think we have Ms. Perkins tonight. And one more person who absolutely needs to be recognized once again, and I believe he's here as a participant, is Ishan Prasad. Thank you again for all of your help on this, Ishan.
Yeah, this is really amazing work that the entire team has done. I think obviously Ishan has played a good role in council Luthold, you go on above and beyond your curtains. I think you've served two terms on city council by that we didn't put into the ADU. And it's just amazing. Maybe we can call it the Luthold ADU project or something because it should be named. Definitely. I know Mayor Protem Mekachuk and I mean, Ms. Perkins and city managers have also played a role, but somebody's appointment, man, that was you. So thank you so much. One other thing, I did see a letter today from the West Valley Community Services. They were the ones that came to our annual picnic and had a whole panel discussion on the housing element. Were very supportive of it and asked the city manager, Leonardis, to contact them to see if they could send us a letter of support. And it has come in. They've also suggested a few other things we should do so that we can make that ADU project truly affordable project. Be able to assist the affordable housing. So they're really good suggestions. So we may want to consider those also. When the issues when it comes up. I assume this is going to be on a future agenda item. So those things should all be considered at that time. And I and I and the situation of whether we should is it or not, if you can really discuss it right now. But it's a matter that should be brought on the agenda. Oh, and we're also losing our city clerk, Michelle Estabio, who was precious enough to up out today. And I'm sure Glossy is appreciated up today. Thank you so much, Michelle, for all the great work you've done with the website and the city services. Click see click through first. And 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 the training you've done for Glossy. I think that's been great. We really appreciate it. Thank you for your your help in this, man.
You're welcome.
And next item we have is the city manager's report. City manager Leonardis, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to add on to what was already said. Thank you. Ms. Estabio, you've been a great clerk for the city of Montesorino tonight is our last meeting with her. And for the greater part of the last two years, excellent job for us. You will be missed. However, we do have a deputy city clerk who Ms. Estabio has been working with for the past couple of years. And that is Glossy Cansales Longarica. She's been doing a good job for us as well. She will be separate stepping in for the time being. And we'll look to the future to see if we need to recruit another city clerk. I also, as previously mentioned, Ms. Jessica Kahn, the city engineer, has left us, but we got the contract through this evening for the interim city engineer. We will not be without services. And we're looking forward to the next city engineer coming on board, doing a good job for us. That is all I have to add to night. You know, the mayor and I, as was already stated, we went to West Valley Mayor's Managers Meeting this week. We were part of the fire, their annual audit, their 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 fire plan for the next several years. We attended their meeting over the weekend. That was very good. We have an excellent agency, as we saw earlier this evening. We're very proud to be working with SCC Fire. And that is that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. You're going to have your hands full. So so keep that going. So future agenda items, I guess the housing element item is going to come up. Are there any other future agenda items?
I think that staff understands the, perhaps, increasing the number is council member Luthold mentioned in terms of the two hundred and twenty-five, and we'll leave that to staff to come back with what recommended number should be. Those are my items.
All right. Eric. Thank you. Any other final words, Councilmember Luthold?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify, I would hope that in the next meeting, the Ms. Perkins can give us an update on the housing element progress as well. And I just wanted to clarify that I'd like to hear whether and when we turned in the initial draft housing element. Were, were she able to introduce some of the changes that we discussed at the prior meeting about really making it convincing that our ADUs are for real and, and that we're really trying to build housing. And we don't want the state to, to come back and, and give us a hard time when we're actually working to produce and produce at the lower income level. So I wanted to find out whether some of those changes we talked about got introduced into the draft. It was mentioned tonight about the support from the West Valley community folks. Is that something that can be added as we have the housing element draft review at HCD? So we just, we need to make sure that we're very proactive about this rather than waiting for complaining to come back from the agency, since we're excited about what we're doing. So I'm hoping that we can get an update on that as we also talk about the issues that have been raised. It is exciting that with our two twenty-five number plus the SV nine numbers plus the space in Monte Serena for the empty lots, we really ought to be meeting our housing numbers. And it's really important to the citizens that they stay updated on what's going on and that we're successful in this. So I wanted to underline that and make sure that we're hearing back on that. The other future agenda item I want to talk about is, and I'm sure that people will be reaching out to us about this, but the council needs to be involved in the city clerk process. That's a city council role. So if we need to have a special meeting on that in the near future to talk about plans, to talk about the deputy city clerk's level of interest and how we should be addressing all of this. That's gonna be a special, I believe that will be a special council meeting, and we should find a date and get that scheduled soon.
Yeah, it's city manager Leonardis, hopefully taking notes on all those things. And the suggestion on incorporating the West Valley recommendation letter is an excellent one, and that does have things that they recommend so that the housing could truly be affordable. So we need to probably put that on the agenda and see how far the city council can go to modify housing element so that satisfies whatever concerns or thoughts or recommendations that the city has. So the city manager and Ms. Perkins can take a real close, do a deep dive to that. Put together, I think, what ADU housing would provide will really be something that will serve the community. I don't know, is the city planner, Pat Perkins, on the problem? Exactly. She thought of those today. Okay. All right. She's been working hard enough as of today, so. Thank you very much. Is there anything else? Not? I think we can adjourn the meeting? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. For those. Thank you.